I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Administrator?
Yes, please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, we thank you for the blessings received. For those gathered here today, inspire our thoughts, discussions, and ideas as we seek to work together to ensure that the decisions made today benefit the residents of Clay County. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Melty?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this afternoon's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Administrator?
Yes, the next meeting of the commission will be held Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM.
Do I, I see a sign about being closed on Truman's Day. Could you?
Yes, I do have that later on, but you're absolutely correct. For everyone's information, county offices will be closed Monday, the 9th, in observance of Truman's birthday.
Okay, and then we will repeat it again. That way we make sure it gets covered. Thank you very much. That brings us to honorary resolutions. Administrator?
Yes, before the commission is a resolution to recognize Public Service Recognition Week. And Clay County is joining public entities across the country in celebrating Public Service Recognition Week. Our staff is continually providing professional and compassionate services to the residents of Clay County. They're performing acts of kindness, acts of leadership, acts of bravery, day after day, to make Clay County a great place to live, work, and play. So I'd like to share a little bit of an example of the services that some of our employees have provided. You know, during the height of COVID-19, the county deployed our resources to meet the needs of our residents. And we certainly saw a considerable amount of activity at our recreational facilities. Many of those individuals participating were novice to outdoor activities and especially first-time campers. Over July 4th weekend, two of our maintenance workers saw a small child that appeared to be lifeless. And the family, while in the area, seemed not to be noticing the condition of the child. Due to the action of our staff, a wellness check was performed, and it was determined that the child was suffering from severe dehydration and was immediately transported to Children's Mercy to receive medical treatment. So I'd like to introduce Nick Foster and Rex Anderson, the two individuals whose quick action resulted in heading off a potential fatal situation. This is just one of the examples of outstanding work that is performed by the Clay County employees that go above and beyond traditional job duties to serve the public, our visitors, and our residents to Clay County. So I'd ask Nick and Rex to come to the podium, and they will be accepting the proclamation on behalf of all the employees of Clay County.
Very good. And let me go ahead and read the proclamation. What's our?
Proclamation.
I have it right here, but I mean, okay. Very good. I'll go ahead and read this because I think, usually we don't like to read proclamations, but I mean, in this case, I think we're talking about individuals who represent the county in such an outstanding way. I think taking the few extra minutes to say these things, I think is certainly worthy use of our time. This is a proclamation 2022-153, Public Service Week, May 2 to 6, 2022. Whereas, public service is an honorable calling that involves a wide variety of challenging and rewarding professions, including providing recreational services, maintaining public safety, improving transportation, and protecting our environment, and performing administrative and management activities which are essential to the efficient and effective operation of the government. And, whereas Clay County employees contribute significantly to the quality of life for the Clay County community with their commitment to excellence, high ethical standards, and diversity of skills. And, whereas excellence in the delivery of public services keeps Clay County strong, prosperous, and a wonderful place in which to live, work, and play, and volunteer. And, whereas this commemoration provides an opportunity to express our appreciation for the many contributions public employees make to our daily lives. Whereas, without these public servants, at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Clay County Commission that the week of May 2nd to 6, 2022, to be Public Service Recognition Week in Clay County. And the commission encourages all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of the public employees on this date, signed by all three members of our commission. Thank you very much for you and for what all of your fellow colleagues do for our county. We will take a moment to present the certificate and maybe get a picture or two, and then we will resume. We will take up where the agenda left off. And then, by the way, before this, did you have any comments that you wanted to make before Commissioner?
Just that I'm, you know, glad that we're celebrating this week, and all the folks who work for the county, and especially the two gentlemen we have here today. Thank you for your service. It sounds like an amazing work saving a child's life. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
I just want to say thank you for your hard work and your quick thinking, because that could have been a horrible, horrible outcome otherwise. And the men and women of the perform public services every day, they truly are the backbone of our community. And we couldn't do our jobs without you guys, so, and everybody. So, no, that's all I got to say. So I'm gonna start rambling, so I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna stop.
I'll just make one remark, and that is that the employees in this county have done a remarkable job on hanging in there through the good times and the bad times, through different administrations. And the, one of the main consistencies is the dedication and hard work and loyalty to the citizens expressed by the people who work for the county. And we are absolutely, totally grateful for that. So thank you. are no items on discussion today. Public hearings, there are no public hearings scheduled. There is no consent agenda today. That brings us to our regular items. That first item is 2022-154. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-154 is a request by the property owner at 5850 North Oak Trafficway for a request to waive interest and penalties in the amount of $1,031.99 for tax year 2022 and 2021. I do believe the applicant is here in the audience, and also, we have Collector O'Reilly, and I believe it's Cesar Baldwin, here to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Okay. If the Collector has anything to say, is there anything you'd like to say in presentation of this resolution?
Thank you. Barbara O'Reilly, Collector. We did not have a correct address. Apparently the parties had moved or had changed mailing addresses, and we did not have a current one. Speaking with the assessment department, they did not have one. And we were not informed until we had received information from the post office. And then we mailed a new bill out, I believe. But we did not have a current address. They had moved what was on record.
Okay. Do any commissioners have questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. If the applicant would like to speak, and I just want to make sure that you understand, you can speak or not speak. It is totally your option. But if you'd like to speak, please come forward. The green light is on, so identify yourself and speak directly in the microphone so that you can be heard on the recording.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, my name is Kazim Javan, and I'm a small business owner here in Clay County. And I always receive, you know, I'm bombarded with so many things. And I moved, I live in Platte County. And I moved, and I called them, and they said, no, post office is going to take care of it. You don't have to worry about it. So I never thought about it. And usually, I have a box whenever I receive my bill. I just throw them all in that box, and first of the month, I pay it all off. And then I get property tax, this and that. And I really never occurred to me that I thought that I've already paid it. I even, among the least, because I usually have it in front of me. And then, a couple of months ago, when I got home, my wife said, oh, you got a letter from Clay County Court, and looked at it, the address was wrong. And when I opened it up, they said that you haven't paid your taxes for the month, the year before, and this year. I was totally shocked. So I wrote the check, but I didn't think that's quite fair. You know, because if you look at my record, I always paid on time my taxes. And I, my change of address, Platte County, and another county that I have, they was correct. And I'm very grateful that accidentally, even though the address was wrong, it was delivered to my address. Otherwise, it would have continued every year, because I even didn't think about it. So if you look at my history of, I always liked to pay my bill, and I thought this is just, wasn't done purposely, because the address was written wrong with somebody else. So that's the reason that I'm over here. And I want to thank everybody for allowing me to talk with you and mention that what my story is all about.
And you've really already answered the question that I had, I had in mind to ask, and that was that, so far as we know, you've not missed a payment.
No, I never do. And my address is 7430. They put 7420. They wrote it wrong. So I never did receive it. And I don't know how I received that last one, because the address was wrong. But thanks to God, I did receive it. So I paid immediately, and I talked, they said that you can appeal it. That's why I'm over here.
Do any commissioners have any, any questions or comments they'd like to make?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none. I think I chatted with you a little bit beforehand, but just to make sure that you understand the process, we will, this evening, the decision will be made to put this on either regular or consent agenda. My feeling is it's probably going to end up on regular agenda, so we will hear it and then make our decision at our next meeting, which should be a week from today at 6:00 PM. You are absolutely welcome to be here if you would like and add any other comments, as you are also, of course, welcome to come at any meeting that we have. But I want to let you know what the process was going to be. And at that time, we will, we will go ahead and take our vote on that most likely.
That would be great. So I don't need to be here next week.
You don't need to, but obviously, you're always welcome.
Okay. Would they, would I get notified by the mail?
No, no, I don't believe there'll be any notification. So yeah, we're just letting you know now that it would be a week from today, but the meeting would be at 6:00 PM as opposed to 3:00, which is today's meeting time.
So should I call and follow, or you would notify me?
You could call in. Why don't you, why don't you call in and perhaps either the Collector and see if there's been any change, or maybe the administration, one or the other, and see if there's any, you know, if there's been any change that requires your presence, or that if you want to be there. Also, if you would like to submit any additional material, certainly feel free to email us, whatever, if you have any additional material you want us to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
With that, it seems like this would be likely to be on the regular agenda.
I agree.
Very well. 2022-154 will appear on the regular agenda at our next meeting. Excuse me. That brings us to 2022-142. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-142 is a consideration of a term and supply contract for tactical vests for the Sheriff's Department. And Captain Agadarian is here to answer any questions that the commission has.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Captain Amy Agadarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This resolution is a request to award a bid to Tier Tactical for the purchase of a specific type of tactical vest for our special operations team, our STAR team. And we went through the RFP process with county purchasing and worked with them to identify the specifications and locate vendor that could provide that product for us.
Could you, for those who are maybe not familiar with the, with the expressions or the acronyms, could you tell us what STAR stands for?
Absolutely. So STAR is our Special Tactics and Response. Other agencies call it SWAT. I mean, we jokingly refer to it as the police's police, so that, you know, there are certain situations that require specialized tactics and specialized weaponry and specialized response that not, it's just not practical to provide those kinds of things to all of our personnel in the field. So the Special Tactics and Response Team are the STAR team. This is a vest that is above and beyond just the typical body armor that we would wear under our uniforms. This is a tactical vest that allows for the carrying of more supplies, more critical incident supplies. You know, you've got room on it for, for, if there is a gunshot victim in the field, or if you need more tourniquets, or special weaponry, you can have what we call a molly carrier that hooks to this vest. It also has different plates in it that have a little bit different ballistic ratings, so that, you know, it's more than just a handgun. It protects against other weapons. And this is the kind of vest that we would put into the field for riot situations, or barricaded subjects, active shooters, things like that, where we need just a little bit more protection and sometimes more weaponry.
Yeah, that was a point I wanted to make sure that was understood, was these are, these are deputies who are, while all deputies are potentially in harm's way, they are much more likely to be in a more, a dangerous situation, and that situation is more likely to be more severe, I guess is maybe one way to put it.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we need to take care of those guys.
Yes, I do think so. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, no questions. Thanks to Captain Agadarian.
No questions. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none. Regular agenda, since it's an expenditure?
I support that. Thanks.
Very well. 2022-142 will be on the regular agenda for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022-163. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-163 is a request to utilize $75,000 of ARPA funding for inmate clothing and cleaning supplies as a result of COVID. This request from the Sheriff's Office for the Detention Center. Auditor Victor Herbert has evaluated it for eligibility under ARPA, and Captain Agadarian is also here to answer any questions about the request.
Captain?
All right. Captain Amy Agadarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This ARPA request, it's odd, we've never had to present anything like this before, but in an effort, last year, working with the county budget team, in an effort to make sure that we could balance the budget requests and not, not bump up our requests, what we did was, we tried to make cuts in our requests where we thought we might be able to identify other sources of funding if they were needed. And I'm here to tell you, at this point, now they're needed. So we have exhausted our commodities budget in the detention funds, and they were only, the request was only $15,000, and it had to go to some other things, including chemicals, laundry supplies, things like that. So this request is to, to help us get through the rest of this year with the purchase of specialized shampoos, cleaning supplies, laundry chemicals, and inmate clothing and bedding and other linens for the operation of the facility. And as we thought was the case, once COVID restrictions were lifted, we are seeing our population increase, and it's putting strain on our, on our, the availability of our resources. So here we are. So we humbly request some ARPA monies to make sure that we can get through the year with our chemicals and laundry and healthcare needs.
Very good. This is going to be a reoccurring theme as we go forward, so I'll just say it once to kind of get out of the way, and that is that we certainly appreciate the work of staff and the auditor to make sure that we are spending the ARPA money in compliance. So that, that is a hard job. That has been, I think, done very well by staff and by the auditor's office, and we deeply appreciate that. There'll be more ARPA requests as we go along, but certainly that comment applies to all of those. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thanks.
Very well. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none. 2022-163 will be on next week's regular agenda. Very well. That brings us to 2022-156, and I see these are grouped together. Do you want to consider them as a group, and then, very well. So we will be considering 156, 157, 158, 159, and 160, and I will just let you go through those as, as, in that order.
Thank you. While these are grouped together because they are similar in nature, they are individual resolutions, and they have to do with, again, ARPA requests, grants to municipalities in Clay County. As the commission may recall, back in March, we had several discussions about the allocation of our first tranche of funding, and we had identified funding for municipalities or grants for, primarily, we had anticipated that they would be infrastructure improvements. And we have already provided grants to the city of Excelsior Springs and the city of Smithville. So in the listing of resolutions, 156, 157, 158, 159, and 160, these are requests for grant projects from the city of Kearney, the city of Grandview, the city of Liberty, and the city of North Kansas City. Now, you'll also see in there, there is a resolution asking to transfer some funds within the ARPA fund from one category to another. We had anticipated and had set aside the funds all in infrastructure, but as our auditor will explain, one of the projects, after evaluation from the city of Gladstone, actually fits in a different category. So one resolution does, from a housekeeping perspective, move funds from one category to another to accommodate these requests. Certainly, our county auditor has worked diligently with the cities to evaluate these projects, to ensure that they are eligible under ARPA funds. And he is here to present information, and then we have representatives from each entity here to answer any questions that you may have about their projects.
Thank you. Mr. Auditor, please proceed.
All right. Yes, Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. And thank you to Administrator Wright for that information there about, about these next sets of resolutions. So we'll start from the top. Resolution 2022-156 is an American Rescue Plan Act application from the city of Kearney. It is a, staff is recommending an award up to $850,000 as a reimbursable grant, so an obligation encumbered up to that amount. Essentially, the request deals primarily with expanding an existing water storage tank and also constructing a new one right adjacent to it. And when we look at the final rule eligibility, any project that is eligible as a drinking water state revolving fund type of project is also eligible under the American Rescue Plan Act. That's how it was written, just to save administrative burden, of course. And so in that category, and under that particular act and fund, there are specifically storage projects, and so that's what this one is, a water storage project. And so therefore, it is eligible. The only thing I'll make note, mention as well, for the city of Kearney is we did, as we asked of all our municipalities, we asked about what are you doing with your own rescue plan funds, considering, unlike the CARES Act, funds actually went directly to cities in this time. And they did indicate that they have, they're dedicating a portion of the remainder first tranche to this project, and the entirety of their second tranche as well to, to this project. And of course, the second tranche will be forthcoming here, here shortly. So that is essentially some explanation on that. And as Administrator mentioned, we do have representatives from the city. We have Mayor Pogue, and we have David Pavlich from the city, if they, if you want to ask any questions of them. But I'm happy to answer any questions, too, if you have any.
Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions. Thanks.
If representatives from the city would like to make a comment, that's certainly welcome to do so.
Yeah, I'll be brief. David Pavlich, seat of Kearney, thank you for commissioners for your consideration of our request, and thanks to Victor Herbert for the work that he's done, helping us with the application process. I want to make just a couple of points. One, this is a long-term investment for the city. We think a water project, a water storage project, is a great project for our city. It's a great investment. It'll last a long time. That's what we think the goals of the ARPA program are for. We will cover all costs that go above and beyond the assistance that the county will provide us. We'll provide some additional assistance. We're also looking for the grant programs that can help us as well. And I think those are all my comments. We appreciate your approval of our request.
I'm glad we were able to, to be able to be helpful on this, and on the other projects obviously we're talking about. So hopefully, that allows the cities, including Kearney, obviously, to go forward with projects that, that are vital to the running of their, of their municipalities, and perhaps to do them in a way that is a little bit more comprehensive than they might have been otherwise able to do.
Yep.
Comments or questions from the commission?
I'll be very brief. But no, I think this is a great project for you guys in Kearney, and I look forward to helping any way we can, and seeing all the other great things you guys do out there.
Thank you.
I will definitely keep an eye on it when I come out to get my fritters from Slavinsky, so.
It's a good place.
Yes, I know.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I just, I've had a chance to review the project. Looks like important and necessary. I'm glad that we're going to be able to partner with you all on making it happen. Just want to say thank you for being here and for further information, and thank you to the mayor for being here as well.
Thanks.
Sounds great. Anyone else wishing to comment on this issue? Seeing none. Administrator, do you want to introduce each one, or you just want to have the, okay. Mr. Auditor, let's go ahead and move to the next project then, please.
Okay. So with that, next, next project would be, the next resolution would be Resolution 2022-157. And this is, as Administrator mentioned, a budget transfer request. And the reason we're doing that is because, again, we have allocated our ARPA funds by separate accounts for the eligible use. And this really helps from the reporting standpoint to be able to document how we use that according to the, according to the final rule. And so 2022-157 is essentially just moving that amount that we had identified for municipalities. The next one, 158, is what is for, it's up to $1 million for the co-located dispatch for the city of Gladstone. So what we are doing here is moving it from that infrastructure account where we had reserved these funds to the COVID response account, because that is the eligible use in this case.
Questions for the auditor? Very well. Is there someone who would like to speak on this from the city of Gladstone?
Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon. I'd like to thank County Auditor Herbert and County Administrator Wright for their help in getting us to this point. Co-located dispatch is an exciting project, not only for Gladstone, but for the entire county, because it brings partnerships with the Clay County Sheriff, the city of Liberty, and the city of Gladstone together to provide emergency dispatch services on a shared partnership basis. So we're very excited to be able to host that. That's a million-dollar request, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Could you give us just a kind of 30,000-foot description of what, of what the projects will entail? And I noticed also, of course, that it had the co-location, which is something that I've been interested in pretty much since I came into office, and it's great to see progress being made on that issue.
Yeah, so currently, there's multiple PSAP answering points for 911 calls. Yeah, so currently, there's multiple PSAP answering points for 911 calls. What this does is co-locate three agencies together in one building for redundancy of staff and for cost savings in equipment moving forward. It comes out of a study from years ago, decade ago probably, for consolidated dispatch, but governance structure and funding were always a problem in that model. What this does is allow dispatchers, communications officers, to work for their home agency just housed out of one space, provide redundancy service and savings in equipment costs moving forward.
And I was fortunate enough to be able to talk with some of our representatives, representatives to Jeff City, and so the legislation, should we go to a consolidated dispatch, is in place, so it would just be a matter of then bringing all the entities together and deciding to do it.
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Carpenter.
I'm just excited about the project, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it. I know it's been years in the making, and I'm glad the Clay County is going to be able to partner with Gladstone. And so, yeah, thanks for being here and giving us the explanation.
Mr. Thompson?
No questions, but I am also very excited about this, and I've had numerous conversations with our own sheriff's department about getting this up and running and jumping on board with you guys. So, I think this is wonderful, and I look forward to helping in any way we can as well. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. We're grateful to the commission for your support.
Well, and just a, a final comment, and that is, we certainly appreciate the, the law enforcement and the administration of all the municipalities that have been looking at this issue, and absolutely also to our sheriff's department, because they have been championing this. So, this is really a coalition of law enforcement professionals who are wanting this to happen, and I'm glad we were able to, to work on the issue.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else care to comment on these two issues, seeing none? Mr. Auditor, if you're ready for the next one?
Yes, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor, and I, I think I neglected to mention two. So, we had the, we had the transfer with Resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, one fifty-seven, and then we also just covered essentially their one fifty-eight with the, with the co-located dispatch. And just point of reference, the eligible use there is essentially a section of the final rule that's, that is indicated of public service capacity, public sector capacity, and, and so that's a little like, like the city manager just, just mentioned there, so I'll just mention that. So, with Resolution twenty twenty-two, one fifty-nine, this is...
Excuse me.
One fifty-eight.
Excuse me. We may want to back up on one fifty-eight, because it was more than a million. It's 1.8 million. They have a second project, and so we probably want to make sure that the commission is aware of that second project.
Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that, because I got kind of carried away on the co-location thing. Mr. Auditor, can you give us a little bit of information? Thank you for, because I did get a little carried, carried by on that.
Can go into that second project there as well. So, the other 800,000 for that resolution, it's combined of two projects, is essentially a, a water main replacement and the, the same, you know, reference that we, we discussed before with the city of Kearney in looking at the drinking water state revolving fund. This time, it deals with transmission. Instead, the, the storage is, is a relevant, relevant use for, according to the final rule. So, I didn't, I didn't know if we'd have any more discussion about, about that component as well.
Okay. Any, does that have any further discussion prompted from the commission?
Not from me, thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I think we were all familiar with that. We just kind of got, kind of got over onto the other subject. So, thank you very much, Administrator. Next item, Mr. Auditor.
Okay, yes, so Resolution twenty twenty-two, one fifty-nine. This time it's for the city of Liberty and is a rescue plan request, obligation encumbrance up to 1.88 million dollars. And this one does consist of three separate projects. They're all water-related, so no need to transfer. As you can see in the transmission there, we have a water main construction, a lime solo construction, as well as work on their existing silo there. And, and then finally, a treatment plant expansion property, so it's essentially a purchase of property adjacent to their existing treatment plant to be able to add on at a later time. So, again, this also goes back to their drinking water state revolving fund and eligible uses, and looking at the treatment for both the lime solo and, and silo, and the property expansion. And then, the water main would be under the transmission eligible use. So, that is essentially all I have on that, and Representatives from the city of Liberty, Andy Knoll and Sarah Cooker here from the Utilities Department.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Andy Knoll, the Director of Utilities for the city of Liberty. Want to thank Victor Hurlberg and Administrator Wright for helping us with this process. Like I said, we have three projects. One is a water main extension, and the other one is the lime silo expansion. Both of those projects really help us with our ability to provide services in the good times and the trying times. We want to make sure that we never run out and that we never have to ask the citizens and the residents to conserve water. The third project for that water property adjacent will help us with future growth that we see happening in our community, so that we can address those in the future. So, we do appreciate your consideration of the request.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments on this issue?
No questions, thanks for being here.
No questions, but once again, these are wonderful projects, and we look forward to helping any way we can. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments from anyone else, seeing none? That brings us to our next item. Mr. Auditor?
Yes, so finally, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one sixty. I know people who have representatives from the city of North Kansas City currently here with us today, but it's a rescue plan request up to $700,000 obligation, and is, again, water-related. This was a relocation and replacement of their water line on Burlington Road due to a cycling project on, on top of it. And so, the eligible use under the rescue plan is, again, DWSRF and a transmission distribution project. Again, with all these projects, we'll work with the cities closely to have those reimbursement and gather documentation before we submit payment. So, I'm happy to answer any questions for North Kansas City.
Is there anyone from the city of North Kansas City that would like to comment? I thought I saw you back there.
Yes.
By the way, I think this is the first time we've run into each other since you, you have attained your new position as city manager of North Kansas City.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for your time today. Also, thanks for the assistance from Administrator Wright and Auditor Hurlberg. As mentioned, we have a water main on the Highway Nine Burlington corridor that, that we're going to replace. Cost of, estimated cost right now is 3.4 million. As such, we've requested 700,000 from the county and truly appreciate your consideration.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, I'm a little bit familiar with this project and the idea that because of the movement of the earth, there, there's a lot of things that cause reliability problems with the prison arrangement, so this should stabilize that water supply.
Yes.
And make it a lot less likely that you'll have problems in the future.
We, that's, that's our hope. It's, it's a main that's been in since the 1950s. It's, it's cast, and, and everybody knows Burlington. It's, has its challenges of its own.
Oh, my God, it's as old as I am. Yes, it does need to be replaced. You're absolutely right. Questions or comments from the commission?
No comments, other than another important project, and I'm glad we're able to partner with North Town and all the other municipal partnerships here today. Thanks for being here.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. No, no questions today, but once again, it's another good project, and I'm glad we're able to help out any way we can, and thanks for coming in today.
We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue, seeing none? It seems to me that the projects listed, or excuse me, the resolutions listed, one fifty-six through one sixty, would appear on next week's regular agenda. Is that the consensus?
I agree for sure. Thank you.
Yes.
Very well. Those items grouped together will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one thirty-seven. Administrator?
Yes, excuse me. Resolution twenty twenty-two, one thirty-seven is consideration of a term and supply contract with four different vendors for cold patch and hot mix materials for our highway maintenance program, and Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator for Clay County. This is a term and supply for our cold mix and our hot mix, or hot patch, or overlay that results into repairs to our potholes and section repairs to our roads. The reason why we have the several vendors is we were told that if they wasn't mixing on that day, what we were looking for, that we'd have to look for another vendor, so we put the other vendors on here so that we wouldn't be short of anything and held back from turning around and doing our job.
All right. Questions from the commission?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this, seeing none? Can we do this on consent? Is that going to be, since we're talking about contracts, not spending the actual money? Just wanted to make sure. If, I just want to get a consent issue on here at some point.
I will happily support a consent.
There we go. So, is the consensus of the commission, that twenty twenty-two, one thirty-seven be on consent for next week?
I agree.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one sixty-one.
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one sixty-one is approval and acceptance of roads into the county road system and release the letter of credit for the Prairie Field subdivision first and second plat. And Deputy County Administrator Walters is here to discuss this.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator of Clay County. Twenty twenty-two dash one sixty-one resolution is the acceptance of roads of Prairie Field into the system, that is plat one and two of Prairie Field, to acceptance into the county. That means that we would turn around and start taking care of those roads. It was under a two-year development maintenance. What we do is when the developer puts the roads in, we inspect all that. We inspect when the roads get installed. We also turn around and make sure that we inspect it as the two-year development maintenance, so he has signs, the seating's done, stormwater drainage is not being plugged up, they're putting their silt fence where it needs to go, and that the asphalt's not failing. And then, when the two-year development maintenance comes due, then what we want to do is approve it. If it's in good condition, there's no repairs to be done, and then he could, we can release his letter of credit.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
Thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Any comment from anyone else on this issue, seeing none? Twenty twenty-two, one sixty-one consent?
I support that.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Brings us to twenty twenty-two, one thirty-six. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one thirty-six is consideration of a terms and supply contract for on-call dock repair services with Atlas Docks, and Parks Director Driscoll is here to provide information for the commission.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mike Driscoll, Park Director. We would request the award of bid nineteen dash twenty-two, a term and supply contract for on-call dock repair and parts services with Atlas Docks. They were the only responding vendor to the bid that was put out and accessed by approximately 12, 12 other vendors. But we have used Atlas Docks now since 2016, I believe, for any repairs, general parts items, you know, due to general wear and tear on the docks, but any emergency services or, or damage that we need to get parts for the docks, we have them to call to either get the parts or to have them come up and work on the docks if need be. And basically, the action need is, is to award this bid to Atlas Docks for a term and supply contract.
Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment, seeing none? I'd recommend twenty twenty-two, one thirty-six be on consent for next week? Is that available? Very good. That will appear on consent next week. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one thirty-eight. Assistant Administrator?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one thirty-eight is consideration of a term and supply agreement for fire inspection and certification services for our facilities, and Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. This is a request to approve Cintas fire protection as our, and we've used them through a cooperative purchasing agreement, to provide services to us for primarily our inspections, which includes our fire systems, our wet sprinklers, our backflows. This is the vendor we need to keep us up to code for all of our systems.
Questions or comments, seeing none? Are there any questions from the, comments from the public, seeing none? Twenty twenty-two, one thirty-eight consent? Very well. Twenty twenty-two, one thirty-eight will be on consent for next week. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one thirty-nine. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one thirty-nine is a request for approval of the use of county grounds by the city of Liberty's Parks and Recreation Department for their bike safety event, which is to be held June 5th on the Rooney Justice Center's parking lot, and Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to share some information.
Hi.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. This is a request for the Parks and Recreation Group to hold a group over in our Rooney Justice Center parking lot for bicycle safety. It includes working with children ages 10 and under. It helps them get motor skills, learn them to gain their balance for using the bicycles. This is also being sponsored in a partnership with one of our local vendors right here on the square, a vendor called Mama &amp; Me that's also cosponsoring this event for the children.
Very good. Questions or comments from the county commission?
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the public, seeing none? Twenty twenty-two, one thirty-nine for consent?
I agree.
Very well. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one forty. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one forty is also a request of use of county grounds by the city of Liberty Art Commission for their 7th Annual Make Music Day event, which is to be held June 21st, and Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, this request with our city of Liberty is a, to use our, mainly our, our steps out front. It is a volunteer event where any local musicians that want to come out and sing, play their guitars, and perform just takes a part in the Make the Music Day, and we don't know what will, what type of people will get to come out. It, you know, we could get ukuleles, banjos, or guitars. We don't really know.
Certainly musical people, as the hope.
Not me.
Very well. Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions, thank you.
Anything from the public, seeing none? Twenty twenty-two, one four oh on next week's consent agenda?
I agree.
Very well. That brings us to twenty twenty-two, one forty-one. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution twenty twenty-two, one forty-one is a request for approval of a request by the Alexander Donovan Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, requesting to place a plaque of the Clay County's role of honor on county grounds and for the county staff to do the installation. And Deputy County Administrator Donna Kuntz is here to share additional information.
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. So, the Daughters of the American Revolution originally had a plaque, not particularly this group, that was housed here on this location in the courthouse, and it was placed February 22nd, 1919. And fortunately, in the 1930s, we had a fire, and the building was lost, and their plaque honoring World War I veterans was also destroyed at that time. So, they've approached us and asked if they would be able to place a commemorative sign, asking our staff to place the sign, and it would actually be on the side of where our Children's Justice Center is. It would be along Leonard Street. Our, we can pick the location somewhere, you know, along the, the street sidewalk area, somewhere between, however we feel fit, it would best fit in. This group also happens to meet at the church that is located right there at the corner of Leonard, so it was also doubly appropriate for them, because this is right by where they hold their meetings. There is an example in your packet of what the sign would look like, the types of materials. They've done other similar things like this in the community, and with that, we are just seeking approval to place a sign for them to honor the, the roles for the World War I veterans that we lost.
And the cost of the, of creating the signage is being borne by the, the organization?
That is correct. They, they will be paying for what the, the sign, the poll, we'll just do an installation.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Just that I think it's fantastic, and glad it's happening. Thanks.
No questions, thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner, may I jump in for just a quick second?
Of course you can.
And I apologize, I usually don't do this, but was there any discussion about why it would be placed by the statue of the World War I soldier on... would be placed by the statue of the World War I soldier on the west side of the building?
That's actually an interesting question. Their backup location, should we not approve this, would be to seek attaching it over there.
It just seems like that would be an obvious place to put a World War I Role of Honor next to a statue of, I think it's a World War I soldier, isn't it?
To Dobboy, I think.
Just to...
At, at this point, though, I have no renderings of what the sign would look like, how big or anything else it would look like. I mean, I can only kind of go on what I was approached with for a request. But that, but that is their backup. If this is, would be a preference, they would...
It just seems like an obvious place, and it would get much more visibility than their suggested location. But sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no. I, I take your point. And I was kind of wondering that myself. But I guess, I was assuming you'd mentioned that that was by where they hold their meetings, so that might, I think you'd said, or am I mistaken?
No, no, they do. They also can, that's where they have, their meetings held at the church.
So I can kind of see that. But I, I certainly share the initial observation of counsel. But certainly, it's their sign and they, but yeah, I'm, I'm thinking this is a nice commemoration for people who died so long ago. Okay.
Any other questions? Any answer on that?
Any further comments or questions?
No questions.
Seeing none. Any comments from the audience seeing none? 2022-141 would be on next week's consent agenda unless there's objection?
I agree.
That brings us to 2022-152. Administrator?
His Resolution 2022-152 is approval of the use of county grounds at a request by the Liberty Parks and Recreation for their annual Liberty Summer Band 2022 outdoor concerts that we held four Tuesdays beginning in May 31st. And Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, the, the Liberty Parks and Recreation Group has been hosting their summer band concerts with us since 1999, with the exception of having to miss COVID last year. This takes place on the Rooney Justice Plaza. It is free to the public. The only date they are not doing it is the day that we're doing Make Music that we just spoke about. And they're deferring that Tuesday to do the Make the Music.
Questions or comments?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay. It sounds like we're getting very busy.
Yes, we actually have created a calendar in our office to keep track of the special events to make sure we don't double book.
I'm glad we've got, I'm glad we're so popular with the different events. Further comment or questions seeing none? 2022-152 on consent?
I agree.
Very well. That brings us to 2022-143?
Resolution 2022-143 is consideration of approval of a master agreement for support services for our point-of-sale system at Camp Branch and Paradise Point. And Parks Director Driscoll is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Mike Driscoll, Park Director. We request the approval and signature for this agreement from Gobarco. And we have been using this system, point-of-sale system, since 2018 at our marinas for their gas and convenience item sales. And basically, with this package, we receive the help service and the embedded chip card technology that protects sales and the secure way of paying by credit card. We get a help, help desk remote service if needed, and support and soft grade, software upgrades. And the issue, please, is approve and sign the agreement for this passport plus offering our point-of-sale system at the marinas.
Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions.
No questions. Thanks.
This appears to involve the expenditure of money, so we would be looking to put 2022-143 on regular?
Sounds good.
Thank you. That brings us to 2022-162. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-162 is consideration of a term and supply agreement with Brink's U.S. for armored car services. And Deputy County Administrator Kuntz will provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. This is a project that I have worked with Bob Nance, our treasurer. We have worked with Commerce Bank and have been working with Barbara O'Reilly, our collector, to try to get our armored car services, get the costs brought back in line, and get dependable service of picking up the funds and making the necessary deposits for us. One of the advantages of switching to Brink's is that Brink's is the only vendor that we've spoken to that will take our money to the bank of our choice. Our previous vendor took it to a bank of their choosing, which then required us moving it from their vault to our bank through electronic wire transfers. This will allow us service to go straight into the bank, which lets us access our money much more quickly. The, our, the bank that we are current, the county currently uses, which is Commerce Bank, has a relationship with Brink's. They provide service with, with too many of their, their customers. Again, Barbara has worked with me very closely on this to help us discuss on delivery dates, what do we need to make changes for this. We've had some difficulties with the previous vendor with not showing up. Sometimes for like, if they were, had a daily deposit, we were, they're supposed to pick up, it could be three or four days before they picked up. This has been a particular concern for the collector. If they miss a day, this can push her to a violation of when her funds are supposed to be picked up and put in that bank. So we are asking for your permission to move and approve this agreement with Brink's for armored car services, which would start on June the 1st.
Okay. Yeah, I was aware that we had some problems of this sort on the, on this issue. I don't think I was the only one who was aware of that. Appreciate the fact that you were able to find a resolution to this issue and to not only negotiate a good deal, but just the idea that it would not be taken to the bank of our choice is just a little astounding, to say the least. With that, questions or comments from the commission?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. 2022-162 for consent. Is that amenable to everybody?
Works for me.
Brings us to 2022-164. Administrator, have we got the right one here?
164.
Okay, 2022, I'm sorry, 164. Yeah, I skipped one down because they were close together. There we are. Back on, back on track.
Resolution 2022-164 is approval of a final plat for Brighton Creek Crossing. And County Councilor Graham has additional information for the commission.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Now, this is the final plat for Brighton Creek Crossing, something that should have been done some time ago, to be honest. It's really more of a housekeeping item and certainly will allow us in the future to, you know, fully dispose of the property should we choose to.
Is there any, any, because as you say, this has been kind of dangling, I guess, for a bit. There is no particular issue to getting it on immediate action. We can certainly...
Next week's fine.
All right. Very good.
More longer if you need more time, but nothing urgent.
Very good. Just want to make sure. Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions. Thank you.
Very well. Any further comments seeing none? That, and we'll put 2022-164 on consent?
I agree.
Very good. That brings 2022-149.
Resolution 2022-149 is a reappointment to the Board of Equalization presented by Presiding Commissioner Nolte to reappoint Eric David Driscoll for a term that would expire on December 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Yes, this is a reappointment. We're trying to do a little bit of catch-up on some of the boards and commissions. The Board of Equalization, of course, is one that is impactful, and they are going to be doing their work very shortly. I don't think that it needs to necessarily be done this evening because members of our boards and commissions retain that position until replaced or they're unqualified.
That is correct. And we did not notify any of the nominees for today and anticipating that you would take action next week, and we'll invite the members at that time.
That's exactly so. My, my recommendation, and I, I think it makes sense, is to put all of these on regular agenda, obviously including this one, so that any commissioners who would like to research or would have further questions have the opportunity to do so. With that, are there any questions or comments from the commission?
Just that that all makes sense to me and works for me. Thanks.
I have one question.
Please.
Was there any other applications that came in with Mr. Driscolls?
Not that I'm aware of, Administrator. Were there any on that particular issue?
No, that is correct. We've not received any other recent applications for this board.
Thank you.
So 2022-149 for regular agenda next week? Yeah, 49. Okay, there we are. That brings us to 2022-150. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-150 is appointments for members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are two appointments recommended by Presiding Commissioner Nolte. Michael David Brinkley is a new appointment that would fill an unexpired term that would expire on January 31st, 2023. And to reappoint David, and I'm probably going to butcher his name, Rotis?
Rotis.
Thank you, whose term would expire January 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Once again, taking him in reverse order, Mr. Rotis is a reappointment, and I think he has, he's done a good job. The unexpired term was caused by a person moving out of the qualified residential area to, to live in, to be on the, on this particular planning and zoning commission. Those are, of course, also, they are not just required to be members, residents of the county, but they have township residency requirements. So it makes it a little bit more, a little bit more of a trick to bring, to make sure we have some, it's a smaller pool to draw on. I think Mr. Brinkley is a, a good candidate. Obviously, his, his resume is attached. And I'll go ahead and ask the questions as long as I've got the floor. Any other applications come in on this one?
Well, we've had other applications for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but none that qualified for the township that we needed to appoint for. And Mr. Brinkley at the time was the only application we'd received.
Very good.
But we're continuing, we, we will keep those applications on file. And should we have an opening in which those individuals would qualify, then they would be considered.
Very good. With that, are there any questions or comments from the commission on these two individuals?
Just one thing I had noticed on Mr. Brinkley is he's listed, his commission district is Western, and believe he would live in the Eastern District. I'm not sure that that is especially important, but just a thing I noticed.
Correct. It is Eastern.
It is.
Okay. I was going to say, if not certainly, I mean, even though it's the township, is the requirement still making sure that the proper, but I mean, we're not going to have very much coming up in Western District. It's almost all incorporated.
Correct. For the Planning and Zoning, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, the representatives must be from the unincorporated area. So it does put the bulk of the county that is unincorporated in the Eastern District. And then, once you have that, then you must follow the township memberships. So we'll correct his application.
That also speaks to the difficulty in getting qualified members because not only do they have to be a member of that, or a resident of that township, but of unincorporated Clay County. So that, that narrows the possible field of candidates rather sharply. Any further questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Please.
So I know this past week, and I, it's been very busy. I don't know if I was able to get, somebody did email me over their interest in joining the Board of Equalization, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not sure if I was able to get that over to you yet. If you receive my email, I'll double check and see. But I don't know, or do we have any other opportunities?
We did receive an application for planning and zoning after the decision had been made.
Okay.
And so that individual is from the same township that would be eligible, but the process had started. And so we have their record on file, and we'll keep that should an opening come up.
Okay. I just want to make sure every, all of them was re-received and, you know, make sure it's a, I'm not sure when the, the timeline was cut off for, for looking at all the applications. But I just want to make sure everything was out there and...
Yeah. It just came in the last day. So the, the agenda had already been presented and discussions had already occurred, I think, with the candidate, this candidate.
Okay. I would recommend 2022-150 be on regular agenda for next week. That brings us to 2022-151. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022-151 is for the Children's Services Fund Board. There are three nominations. These are all three reappointments. John McGovern, Deborah Herman, and Bruce Cully. And their reappointments, their term would expire December of 2024.
Thank you. Yes, they are, they are reappointments. The, the board seems to be functioning at a pretty high level. I've attended their meetings on occasion and, and talked with a number of the people involved there. It may well be, and we don't know, but there may well be another vacancy come up. At that point, I think we could look and see what, what else we can be doing. But I just wanted to give the commission a heads up that there's possibility.
And anticipating a question at this time, we don't have any recent applications for this particular board.
Okay.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
No, other than I'm glad to, to be updating these appointments with, I mean, this is a $7 million a year board with the Children's Services Fund. So this is, you know, one of the, one of the bigger ones. And so appreciate moving forward on that.
Yeah, I have one question. So I am, I know in the, in the previous years, we've had a lot of interest in members of the community trying to get on through this board. And I know there have been applications put in, and there's individuals who came to the meetings time after time. I didn't know, do we keep their applications on file for this, or do they have to reapply for, for these openings?
There are some applications still on file, but due to transition of staff changing on who is responsible for managing this, I'm not sure that we have some of the older applications in our record. So I would suggest anyone who is, may have applied over a year ago, I would recommend that they go online and apply again, because we have a better system in place to track those applications.
Good. I will make sure to pass that on for any, any future use then. Good to know.
And another thing worth noting is this is a rather large board, so...
It is.
And it also turns over every year. So that certainly someone who is interested in, in putting their name forward should do so. And I believe that usually comes up at the end of the, yeah, there it is, December 31st. So as we get to the end of this year, we will certainly be looking to see who wants to stay on and what, what vacancies there might be. So yes, certainly encourage those who are interested to make application, even if they have previously. So if there's no objection, 2022-151 for regular agenda next week? And that brings us to our final one, which is 2022-155. Administrator?
2022-155 is the appointment of members to the Workforce Investment Board. There is two positions. One is a reappointment for Tony Reinhardt, whose term is to expire May 30th of 2024, and a new appointment of Kirk Davis, who also's term would expire May of 2024.
Thank you. As was pointed out, the appointment of Mr. Reinhardt is a reappointment. He has served on that board for some time. And Kirk Davis is, of course, I think, known to pretty much everybody on, on the panel for his work with the City of Gladstone. He is also a board of the, an executive board member of the Clay County EDC. So he would be a new, a new person on that board. Questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks.
Questions.
And I don't know that we got any other applications, did we?
We have not received any recent applications. No.
This is, this is to tell you to, something of a, this is not a very high-profile board, so some of the others attract a little bit more attention, so I can, I can certainly understand that. With that, 2022-155 on for regular next week. And that brings us the end of our, our agenda, is their motion related to placing items on the regular and consent agendas for next meeting.
Commissioner, I move that we put the following items on the consent agenda for next Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. 2022-137, 161, 136, 138, 139, 140, 141, 152, 162, and 164, with each of the remaining items from today's agenda on next week's regular agenda.
Motion has been made to place the items listed on the consent agenda. The remaining items to be on next week's regular agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you recognize it's closed.
Close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any items not covered on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holders? Are there any office holders or agencies who would like to comment on any items not appearing on the agenda this evening, or this afternoon, excuse me? Seeing none. That brings us to Administrator comments, Administrator?
Yes, just to reiterate again, to remind those who might be joining us, county offices will be closed on Monday, May 9th, in observance of Truman's birthday. And again, I think we've shared with the commissioners, we're having a sort of celebration for our employees tomorrow in honor of Public Service Recognition Week. We will have the Casey Dole food truck here for Dole whips on the square from 12:30 to 3:00, hopefully the weather cooperates. It'll also be available to the public if the individuals want to go up and buy something from the vendor, but we hope you can stop by and the weather cooperates and spend a little time with employees.
Thank you very much. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Thompson?
I have no comments, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments, thank you.
I do have a very short one I would like to make. Two weeks ago, we had a discussion regarding the county's commercial property surtax. The North Kansas City School District asked that a proposal they submitted be considered along with the auditor, assessor, and treasurer. I think it is a, it is reasonable, and I appreciate their suggestion. The district's recommendation that Hancock Amendment limits be applicable to the surtax and that the county, Clay County rate be competitive with Jackson County, I believe, is sound. Clay County businesses must be able to compete on a level playing field with Jackson County businesses. The district's proposal adjusts the rate of reduction from 50% to 10%. So, just wanted to give an update on, on where we were on that. That brings us to approval of the minutes, we have, I believe it is two sets of minutes, a, we have March 2, 2022-130 p.m., and March 2, 2022-3 p.m. Is there a motion related to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the, both sets of minutes as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of both the March 22, 2022-130 p.m., and March 22, 2022, excuse me, March 2, 2022-3 p.m. minutes, discussion?
No discussion.
You're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports, I believe we had received one?
We have, you had two, you should have received two, you should have received the April monthly report for revenue and fees from the Parks Office, and you should have also received a monthly report on a cash basis from the auditor. If you didn't receive one of those, let me know, but I, you know, emailed them out.
Have both commissioners received those reports?
Yeah, thank you.
I think you got two of them from the auditor, because they had two different, two different ones.
Brings us to executive sessions, there are none listed, therefore, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.